Board for Land Use Hearings and Adjustments and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Bonita Springs, welcome guests. Roll call, please.
Wes Norris.
Here.
Robert in Serpie, Mark Nosbaum.
Here.
Chairman Brunswick.
Here.
Pete Bastori.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Frank Lyles.
Here.
Wes Norris, would you please lead us in invocation, please? All rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come today and hope that you give us good guidance to do the city's business. We also ask that you look after those who in harm's way on our behalf today that we may conduct this business. Give blessings to the city of Bonita Springs. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
And Frank Lyles, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May I remind everybody to please silence your cellphones if you haven't already done First order of business this morning is to appoint a vice chairman. Excuse me, my name is Roger Brunswick. I'm the chairman this year for the board. And we now have to appoint a vice chair. So I open for nominations for vice chair. Can I have?
If you would.
Pardon?
No, I'll resign.
Speak into your microphone, please.
Oh, here it is.
Yes.
The last says you go on.
No, I'll resign. No, please.
No?
The other gentleman.
I'll nominate.
Yeah.
Okay.
I nominate this.
Richard Donnelly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor of Richard Donnelly as vice chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes carry.
I should have prayed for him.
Richard Donnelly, congratulations, you're the vice chair.
We hit you hard enough.
In my absence, you get to have all this fun.
He never misses, though he.
And I know you never miss.
You don't miss.
Let's call the first case, please.
Justin Diner, staff attorney for the city of Bonita Springs, filling in for Audrey Vance today. The first case is variance 13-07-113 BOS and SPE 13-07-116 BOS, an ATC cellphone tower. This is a variance request to allow for a reduction in the setback requirement for a wireless tower from 149 feet to 97.6 feet from the north property line, and also a special exception request to allow for a 149-foot monopole cellphone tower. We have Jennifer DeFaula-Hagan here today to testify, but staff will be moving for a Jennifer, do you swear affirm and tell the whole truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer.
The applicant is still in the process of rectifying the record, so staff is continuing. Last time we were here, the balloon test had not been flown because of bad weather. That has been flown, but the report has yet to be presented. So to continue the case, we will move to March.
Jennifer, thank you. How long do we have, how long do you have left to hear this case before we have to remove it from the docket?
We can continue, I mean, it can be continued further. Are you asking like how many continuances they get? They have not, unlimited, actually.
Okay. All right. Do we know what the holdup is?
We are waiting for the balloon test finding report to be submitted.
Does it normally take this long?
It does not. However, we've had some really crazy weather, so they were not able to fly the balloon test until I think they got it done on the 29th of January. And then, so they are putting that together and submitting it to us. So it didn't meet the advertising dates because everything kind of gets backed up.
Okay. Those out in television land and in the audience might question our beautiful weather. I'm not putting you on this, I mean, the weather, not putting you on the spot, but we've got the most beautiful weather, the most magnificent days in the country.
It has been very windy, and that's the problem when you're flying the balloon at 149 feet with a lot of pines around.
I see.
It's popping. So they've been out there several times, and they were able to fly it this last time, and they're submitting the report with the findings and the pictures for staff to compile our report.
Does the board have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You flew the balloon on the 29th?
I can't remember the exact date. It was at the end of January.
And today's the 18th, and it takes 20-something days to get a report?
It takes them time to put the report together, and then we cannot do, the staff report has to be finalized two weeks prior to the hearing. Since staff has not received the report yet, we have not finalized our report. And then everything backs up two weeks prior to the case to be heard due to advertising.
Okay. I hope you don't, we're not after you personally.
Oh, no.
I hope you understand that.
Right, absolutely.
But it just seems that for almost six, eight weeks, and we've got a business group out there where they get what they want here or not is another question, but to keep delaying a business that would like to do business is just, it just confuses me, but I'm easily confused.
Well, staff can't make our recommendation until the application's sufficient, so until that's done, we cannot proceed.
Okay, so we're going to continue the hearing until?
To March 18th.
March 18th.
In this chamber, it has to be a time and, it has to be a time and date certain, so you have to say to March 18th in this chambers.
Okay.
Will we receive the staff report in time for the meeting?
Yes, absolutely. That's why it continues to be continued, because we're still waiting for that information for me to put the report together.
So we set it as a time certain, Mr. Chair?
A date certain in this chambers for March 18th.
Any other questions of the board? Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Not to put you on the spot, no, we're just trying to understand the issues at hand.
Sure, no problem. We'll see you next month.
May we have the second case, please?
The next case is.
We vote on it?
Wait a minute.
Do we have to vote on that continuance? Okay.
I move that we continue unless someone already has.
From March 18th?
Yes.
I'll second.
Date certain, March 18th.
All in, roll call.
Wes Norris.
Yes.
Mark Nosbaum.
Yes.
Chairman Brunswick.
Yes.
Pete Bastori.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Frank Lyles.
Yes.
May we have the next case, please?
The next case is VAR 14-10409 BOS, Tarver Side Yard Road Setback Variance. This is a relief from LDC 4-2192, requiring a corner lot to maintain a 15-foot setback from a street easement or right-of-way to allow a 5-foot setback from a roadway and utility easement as depicted on the Carollands Unrecorded Subdivision between lots 58 and 61. Today, we have Jaclyn Gensen here to testify for staff. She's going to do the staff report. Jaclyn, do you swear or affirm that testimony you'll give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm now ahead.
We also have experts here today to testify. We have Bob Pritt, who is an attorney. Do you want to come up, or do you want the staff report to go first?
I would like to have the staff, go ahead and go first. We're essentially, we didn't receive a package.
Once the staff report comes up, I'll swear you.
Just now?
Picture of this.
Jaclyn, you've been tendered before as a witness in front of this board.
That's correct.
As an expert, and you're an expert in land use and planning?
That's correct.
Justin, would you pull your microphone down a little bit, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Better.
Good morning. For the record, Jaclyn Gensen with Community Development. I did hand out a copy of the PowerPoint, so feel free to write on that as you have questions as we go along. Otherwise, we'll be on the screen for you. Okay. Again, this is just a summary of the requests. Mr. Diner did read it into the record of what the applicant is here today asking relief from. Essentially, it is a, this is a very, very unique situation where we have an older unrecorded subdivision that was done in the 60s, and there's several reiterations of what we would call a sales map. And this lot has been subject of an easement, and when it was officially recorded in the clerk of courts document, there's a 20-foot roadway utility easement. However, it really functions as a driveway for the lots to the east. But we'll go ahead and into some more detail, but essentially, these residents do have plans in our office right now for house constructions, and this came up during permitting, just realizing that this setback was a concern and an issue and a hardship. So that's why they're here today before you. Staff did recommend approval with conditions, and I'll go ahead and go over that and how they met that finding criteria. Just some property information, and I will put up an aerial location map, but this is the address. Future land use is Moderant City Residential, which does allow for single-family homes at 5.8 dwelling units an acre, currently zoned RS1, and it's vacant residential. This is the location map before you. This is Hickory Boulevard, and this is McLaughlin Boulevard, right here. This is the subject property. The easement is just at the southern property line and goes up to this house, which is on two lots. This is a picture that I clipped from the unrecorded subdivision document from the clerk of courts, where you can actually see this easement here. And it's a 20-foot easement, but they classified it as a roadway easement. And in our land development code, if you have a road, we have road-required setbacks, even though this functions more as like a driveway. So when this comes in permitting, our permit technician, sorry, our planning technician has to enforce the land development code, which says if you are a corner lot, which in essence they are because they have frontage here and side here, you have to have a 15-foot setback from the edge of the right-of-way easement, which would result for them over 35 feet, which makes the lot a little challenging to build upon. So again, just some background, it's a corner lot, 20-foot roadway utility easement along the southern property line, which functions as a driveway to the property to the east. The LDC requires the 15-foot setback, which in essence would require them, if we really applied that setback, 35 feet. According to the deeds, which this is very interesting, according to various deeds that abut the property, the easement is reflected and depicted differently in the description. It's a survey quandary. So again, just to go ahead and get this cleaned up, we thought a variance would be one of the options that they could follow. So that is why they are here before you today. The hardship is because we are applying the road setback standard to this property because it is a roadway easement. Even though it functions as a driveway, staff can't be like, oh, it's just a driveway, so we'll give you your seven-and-a-half-foot setback, you know, not a big deal. We can't do that because then you have a title issue. So this was one of the best alternatives for the applicant to go ahead and get them moving with their house plans. A couple of their options that they could have considered, but they were time-intensive. They could have gone ahead and vacated the current easement and rerecorded it, but then you have to deal with multiple property owners. It can be very expensive when you get to legal and attorney fees and recording fees. The other option would be to redesign the house. But again, they resubmitted plans, they spent money on construction and architectural drawings, and then it'd be a smaller footprint. So the most appropriate option for them was the variance process. This is a site plan, and I kind of turned it so you all could see the setback in question. Again, this is the 20-foot easement here, roadway utility easement, and you can see there's an existing gravel driveway which provides access to the house to the east. And this is their proposed house right here. They are going to meet every other setback that the RS1 district requires, okay? So here, they meet their seven-and-a-half-foot side setback, which normally would be required over here, but because we have this roadway easement, it's 15 feet from the edge of the roadway easement, but they are requesting a 5-foot setback from the edge of the roadway easement, which ends up being 35 feet. And then here, they have a 20-foot rear setback because they're budding another property. And here, they have a 20-foot, 25-foot water body setback. So they meet every other setback. It's just relief from the driveway to the east. That's all they're asking for. So staff went ahead and recommended approval to allow a 5-foot setback from a roadway utility easement, okay? And it's limited to one single-family home. Those are our conditions. And the findings and conclusions, there are five criteria for staff to recommend approval of a variance. They've met all five. So there are definitely exceptional, extraordinary conditions to this lot because of the roadway easement being there, which functions as a driveway. It's not a result that the applicant made. It's, that's just the way the documents were recorded, and maybe back in the 60s, that's just what they did. I don't know. It is the minimum variance that they could go ahead and request for. Staff is very comfortable with the functionality of the driveway that will be maintained. It's not going to be injurious to the neighborhood or the public, and it's not so reoccurring of every property in Bonita Springs that we need to go ahead and do this all the time. So those are the five criteria, and that is how staff went ahead and recommended approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions? Frank?
No, sir.
So this is considered a pre-existing nonconformance?
It's not that it's a nonconformance, it's just that it's an older subdivision that was recorded. Essentially, they, these older subdivisions, from what I understand, I'm not a surveyor, but they used to just go ahead and sell these lots off of sales maps. And they weren't really exact. And in your backup, there are some examples of one, it wasn't necessarily a recorded document, but Johnson Engineering had done one iteration of this map where it was actually labeled as a driveway. But the document that got recorded with the clerk of courts is a roadway. So it just totally changes the dynamic of how staff has to review this request, unfortunately.
And are there concerns from the utilities if they were to move the house over?
As far as we know, there's no utilities underneath, but it is a driveway for the residents to the east. I have not personally been contacted by anyone when I did the notification, so as far as I know, there were no concerns. But I believe there is someone in the audience today that would like to speak on this, but it's five feet from the edge of the roadway. So this is the gravel driveway. The easement is from here over, and they're going to be five feet from that easement. So the closest point is going to be right here, and I believe that's a garage. The applicant can go ahead and go over those if you'd like.
And what's the setback on the other side?
Seven-and-a-half feet. And that is required in the RS1 district.
And on the side with the seven-and-a-half-foot setback, I'd be concerned if they were planning on putting air conditioning units or pool equipment, pumps, et cetera, on that side?
We do have a code, yeah, we, city council went ahead and approved an amendment last year about permitted encroachments, and you may have pool and mechanical equipment encroach up to three-and-a-half feet into a seven-and-a-half-foot side setback.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions here?
Will there be access to the water from the rear of the property?
They do have waterfront access, just like everyone else does on McLaughlin.
Do we know the size or dimensions of the structure that's being proposed?
The architect is here, and he can answer, but they do meet the required lot coverage of that district, so otherwise, it wouldn't make it pass, Mr. Ortiz.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the dimensions of the homes are.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, that concludes staff's presentation.
Any other questions?
Have you heard from the fellow at the end of the driveway, the owner?
I have not. I know that the property owners have been talking with them personally, but they have not directly contacted staff.
Does he have representation here today?
The owner is here to testify.
Of the property at the end of the driveway?
Yeah.
Another question concerning the setback. The sketch of the building shows several garages on the front. In order to access the garages, does the driveway have to intrude into the setback area and into the actual easement?
I have to let the applicant address that, but I don't believe that they're sharing the easement, but they would go ahead and have to answer that for you.
We'll get that answered later.
Correct.
Do we have any other questions here?
Just one quick one.
Go ahead, Wes.
Basically, what we're here today is because when we recorded the deed, we used the word roadway instead of driveway.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, in reality, when you have an easement on a piece of property, you can build right up to that easement line. But in this case, because it's a roadway easement, there is a required street setback that has to be applied. But if this was a drainage easement, you could build right up to that drainage easement. But in this case, it's a roadway, so.
Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you, Jennifer.
Jackie.
Jaclyn, sorry. Sorry, Jaclyn.
I just, the Jackie.
Would the applicant care to address the board?
Please, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Robert Pritt. I'm with the law firm of Retschel &amp; Andrus, and I represent Dr. Tarver, Dr. Sammons. Dr. Sammons is here today. They're the owners of the property in question. We also have with us Greg Griffin of the builder, and I think it's called Forsight Building, and Rich Guzman, who is the designer of the building and the structure. And they're both here available to answer any questions. As far as the presentation is concerned, I can't do it any better than the staffer, the staff member did. She very clearly and succinctly indicated to you what the problem is and what the proposed solution is. We did go to the, to the planning staff to see if we could have an interpretation that that's not really a roadway because it does not function as a roadway. This is before the city became a city. This is all pre-existing many, many years ago. You probably have heard this before with regard to other situations, similar situations, but Lee County is somewhat unique, I think maybe in the state of Florida, but it's one of those counties that had a policy for many years of allowing so-called unrecorded subdivisions. They're not platted, and they're a real pain in the neck for everybody. Nowadays, if you're going to do a subdivision, you usually have to record it. But all over Lee County, we have this problem. When I was out in Sanibel, we had several of those, and there are several out there, unrecorded, recorded subdivisions, we call them. And you talk to somebody in Colliard County, and they say, what's that? So, but what happened in Lee County is the, sometimes these things would be on the back of, we had one out in Sanibel, I think it was on the back, the sketch was actually on a menu from, from one of the restaurants. But they did the sketch, and that sketch eventually became part of what was recorded, not platted, nothing like that. And, but that is still the, the most official map that they have. So it was, it was not done precisely, and in this case, this so-called roadway easement, sometimes it was called a driveway easement, some kind, sometimes it was called roadway easement. Hey, what's the difference? Well, there was never a big deal, never a difference, until the county and then the city became more precise about what's a roadway versus what is a driveway. We did ask the owner of the property that is behind this, really, it's only one, it's two parcels, but it's one, it's all built on, the property's built on both parcels, so that it's really only serving one structure, one dwelling unit in the back. We did ask if they would be willing to change the easement so that, to make it clear that this is okay. They declined to do that. I understand that they're here today, and I presume they may want to discuss or address you, but the, the bottom line is, this is a beautiful house. This, this is my opinion, I'm a lawyer, so I can't, I can give all kinds of opinions, but that's probably not worth two cents. But it's a beautiful house, and it's well set. It's, you can see how it's angled to, to take advantage of, you know, the view in the back. I did check, somebody asked a question a minute ago about where's the pool going to be, and the air conditioning units and so on, and they're not going to be anywhere close to that easement. And you can, if you want confirmation, I'll have either Mr. Guzman or Mr. Griffin get up and show you how that's going to work. Part of the hardship is that in order to satisfy the roadway, if this were called a roadway, in order to satisfy the roadway designation, it's really, as you can see, it's really hard to re-figure, replace, put that, that house in such a way as to not make it look odd. And that's not what the city normally wants. This takes advantage of the, of the water in the back and is otherwise set very well on the property. And if you want to hear testimony from others, I'll be glad to provide that. We think that all in all, this is a good solution to a problem that was not of my clients doing in any way, shape, or form. It was just part of the history of Lee County, and we ask that you consider granting the variance. If you would like, I, I do not intend to present anybody unless you would like to hear or ask some questions of them as to either of Dr. Sammons as the owner or of the designer of the property.
Do we have any questions? The board have any questions?
I still have the question of the size and square footage.
Yes.
Partly, the setback requirement is not being met because of the size of the structure. So I'd like to know what, what size we're talking about.
Okay. Mr. Guzman, can you give us that information?
I can't talk.
I need to swear you in as well, and know if you're testifying as an expert today, or.
Well.
If he's testifying to just fact, he doesn't have to swear.
He's right, I agree. He's, I think he's just going to answer factual questions. If we need to get into expert testimony, I will have him, yeah, we'll have him sworn, or have him qualified as a designer of the property.
Please state your name for the record.
Richard Guzman.
And do you swear affirm that the testimony you'll give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Donnelly was asking about the garages. Is it a one, two, three-car garage?
Well, for symmetry, we put the three-car garages and the four-car garage doors, actually, if you look, they're symmetrical, which I don't think she has the display up there, but it's, there's two garage doors on the left side, which don't affect whatsoever their property or the easement. It's basically, they could have a separate driveway on the left side. On the right side, the two garage doors there, I think the intent was, it would be a little tight, but if, you know, it's an occasional garage door, it's not necessarily something they'd use every day. But it could, it could have its own driveway, per se. So yes, I mean, it would be nice to be able to utilize that existing driveway that's there for those two right-side garage doors, but it isn't the end of the world.
For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, in your packets and your backup, there is an elevation of the home proposed. Looks like this. It's going to be after the exhibits and the attachments, towards the back.
If I may add, this house was done in a Southern Low Country Plantation style, so, you know, symmetry was important to the customer, and having the symmetrical garage doors were more important. So that's why you'll see that. And these doors will be, you know, done of a nice wood. They'll look more like a barn-style door.
So Mr. Guzman, the idea for the two garages from the top of the picture there is to use this same easement that we've been talking about, so it becomes basically like a shared driveway?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's, it would be something that would be great if that could happen, but it, it's mainly, there is enough room there for them to get a, their own specific driveway. I mean, I don't see the purpose of having two driveways. I think they should just have one, maybe do a little circle in the front of their driveway and share it in a perfect world, but it's not the end of the world if they have to put a separate driveway in. if they have to put a separate driveway in.
Would the separate driveway intrude into the 20-foot setback easement area?
No.
It would miss it?
That's what we had to maintain. We would have to maintain that. It would look kind of silly having two driveways side by side, but we would have to deal with that. I mean, I think the intention was for the customer to pave the entire driveway for the neighbors so they would spend the money and do a nice driveway and then make it all look the same. That was the intention. So you don't have a gravel road right there or driveway.
So the driveway would be paved all the way...
Yeah, all the way to the end.
All the way back to the owner in the rear as well?
That was the intention.
So it becomes a shared driveway?
If it had to be, yes. But if, if they have to, they, they have certainly enough room to do their own driveway.
Thank you.
If, if it's a shared driveway, who would be responsible for maintaining it?
I can't answer that question.
Any further questions of the board?
What's the proposed square footage of under air?
The house is approximately 5,600 square feet under air. And also, if I may add, the very one corner of the house is the closest point, and that's 25. And then it tapers away. And so the furthest point is at 56 feet. And then it immediately starts to go to about 33 feet away from that property line. So it's only that one corner that's affecting the setback.
There was a wrought iron fence at the rear of the property that I noticed. Whose property is that on?
I can't answer that. And there was a question also about the mechanical equipment?
I think that was already addressed, answered by the attorney.
And this pool will be at the, on the ground as well?
That's the pool at the rear of the structure with the spa at the end? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah. I know that's been an issue for some people with the raised pools, but this pool is on the ground.
Do we have any other questions from the board? Having heard none, do you have another comment you want to make, sir? Mr.? Sorry.
Yes, if I may, I'd like to have Dr. Sammons address the board.
Surely. Dr. Sammons? Good morning.
Are you testifying as an expert today?
No. I'm just testifying as an owner. Good morning, everybody.
I need to swear you in. Can you state your name for the record?
Shay Sammons Tarver.
And do you swear affirm that the testimony you'll give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Good morning. Public speaking's not really my thing. So I just wanted to say thank you for hearing this, first of all. We've been working, we've had the land for probably about five years come September. We've been working on this plan. We went in good faith, you know, to have our plans drawn up. And we've paid for the architectural drawings. We've paid for the engineering. And at this point, we go to permitting, and we find out, you know, we, we can't build it. So it's been a really long process. And it's just our dream home that we want to build to raise, you know, our family in. And we wanted to be in Benita. And we have this property, and we can't build what we thought we were going to be able to for the past year we've been planning it. So you do know, the whole piece of property is ours that includes the easement. So we pay property taxes on this easement as well. And obviously, dentistry is my thing. I don't know anything about planning or designing or drawings. And we did try to go to the neighbors to let them understand that, or to try and get their, you know, blessings, so to speak. Because the city did tell us, you know, if we go ahead and get their okay, legally, we can change the roadway determination to a shared access easement, then that we could build what we wanted to build or what we had planned to build. We did approach them. I'm not sure. We just wanted to show them our plans. They really said they wanted nothing to do with it. And I know they're here today to talk to you, too. And Gus and Donna have always been very nice. You know, we thought we would have excellent neighbors. And we're not sure where all of this is coming from. It's all sort of making us think, you know, is God trying to tell us something? Basically, we, we're five feet off. You know, if we go to the 15 feet off, we're going to have to redesign the whole house, basically. So that's going to be another big sum of money that, at this point, we don't have to spend. And I know it looks huge, and it is huge, which my husband and I went back and forth with that, too. But the ground floor, Rich, I don't know how, the space actually on the ground floor, how big is the garage? Basically, it's building up. And to give you an idea, Gus and Donna's house is much bigger than our house. I don't know if you guys have been out there, but it's, you know, it is a large house. But it's our dream home. So we're just hoping that we can, you know, build it. So thank you for, for hearing us today. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions? Having seen none, I ask at this time for public input. Public input. Is there any public input? Come on up.
Can you state your name?
Morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good. Can you state your name for the record?
Loretta Tiskakis.
And Loretta...
Speaking of that, there you go.
Loretta, can you raise your hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony you'll give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Okay. There's just a few things. My father obviously objects. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of him. There's a few things that they mentioned. The fact of the matter is, is it just doesn't, it just doesn't, doesn't meet any, many, any of the legal requirements. So there's a few things that they mentioned that I thought would be worth noting. She talked about, you know, hardship of changing plans and spending more money and stuff like that. But they are building a 5,000-square-foot home. So they also knew ahead of time when they purchased the property that there was a 15-foot setback. My dad's been the owner for over 20 years. When they sold the property, they knew exactly the requirements. So I think that going in on this was just blind. They can change the plans. They said that the symmetry and the garage door would be an occasional thing. And if it's an occasional thing, then it's, you know, it's not really meeting the undue hardship either. We just think that if you guys grant this, you guys would be giving basically a special privilege to their property if they, you know, knowing that they went in on this. So those are just a few things that I have. I know my dad's a little bit more passionate about it. So I'm sure he wants to speak.
Sir, do you wish to offer some comment? Please step forward.
Please state your name for the record.
Tskakis.
And can you spell that? And can you raise your hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony you'll give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
May proceed.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you you hear me today. I'm here to object this because I lived there for 25 years. The lot is the one that is proposed to build this huge house. 5,000 square feet is, is an extremely big house. The lot, it didn't call for that kind of house, but that's not my business. I'm here to object this because I think that if everybody comes and build a human, a human-made house on one side, and then we have the lot 61 on the other side, we may have the same problem. And, and so they did ask me to consider this. And I think that it's not just for me, but I think it's that anything that is out of boundaries, out of law, it shouldn't happen. So that's why I object this.
Is that it? Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I have a question. Looking at the map, your house would be to the right.
No.
To the left?
It would be to the east. Those two lots behind, 59 and 60, it's my house. I am the only one that, that is supposed to use the driveway. And yeah, right there, that's my house.
Would you be opposed if it was a smaller house?
If it was the legal house, yeah, I wouldn't be opposed. No, of course not.
Sir, you had, you've lived there 25 years.
Yes.
And you knew at some point in time that there was going to be another, another building on that lot. During that 25-year period of time, you, you had the opportunity, I suppose, to purchase that lot. Did you originally own that property?
Yes. Yes, years ago, though. I didn't sell it to them. It's, I believe, is three, four owners.
Okay, but at one point in time, you did own the entire?
Yes. Yes, I did.
So at that point in time, you knew that you were going to lose some control over what was built on that piece of property by others?
I have no, I have no objection to that.
Okay, I understand.
I have objection only to the size of that two, two... Excuse me.
No, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just saying. The property, as it has been described to us, meets all of the setback requirements and size restrictions for that property, with the exception of this utility easement, which is now being, which is really a driveway easement or a roadway easement, I guess, as we call it. But in all other manner, it, it meets all of the other restrictions. And we didn't talk about it. But I suppose, Jaclyn, it meets the height restriction as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're probably, they're, I don't know if they're in a flood, they're definitely in a flood zone. I'm not sure if they're in a velocity zone. But FEMA would require that their first finished floor do meet the flood requirement.
And that's, of course, why it's a still home, right? Or what I call a still home. There's probably a fancier name for that. So I understand your concern and maybe the loss of peaceful enjoyment by not, for 25 years, you've had a vacant lot in front of you. But I don't know... Well, we'll let the board decide.
I love my neighbors. We had a very good time with them. But I didn't know that they're going to come and try to, to change the law. When I sold this lot, they, they, they knew exactly what we have. So I'm not objecting. The quietness, I have no problem with that. And like doctors say, that we had a good time with them. But I'm not objecting anything else but the setback to change the, to be out of the ordinary legal law.
And the testimony we've heard would indicate that their intention would be to improve that setback property, that roadway from gravel to a hard-surface material. And if I understood the testimony correctly, that would also include your driveway, if you so desire, as well, at their expense. So it might improve the value of your property.
No, I don't think...
If you so approve. Okay, and are there any other questions?
I have the letter for, for the board to present, so...
Sure.
Sure. I just have one.
I have a question, too.
Go ahead.
Wes Norris, go ahead. Do you have a question while this, while we're getting this letter?
I just have one, sir. If this easement is approved and the home is built, will it impede your access to your property?
If, if this build, I'm sorry...
Okay, so if they build their home as they're asking to build it, you are still have access in and out of your property as you have it today? As far as getting into your...
As I have today, I don't think so. Maybe a little bit more restricted.
More restricted?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's only 20 feet. And so if we have a double driveway, it's not going to be enough. So it won't be exactly the same way today as today.
Okay, be the same as it would be?
It won't be the same.
In other words, you cannot get to your property?
Oh, yes, I, yes.
Okay, that's basically what I'm asking. Can you still get to your property?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mark, do you have a question?
Yes, my question was for Jaclyn. You, you had mentioned that, that the lot in question, this gentleman's lot, is a double lot?
This gentleman's lot is...
This gentleman's lot, yeah.
That's what I understood.
Yes, okay.
This is a copy of the unrecorded subdivision. The owner, Mr. Tiskakis?
Yes.
Yes, he did build his house. I think permits were pulled in 2005 for one single-family structure on lots 59 and 60.
Okay, do we have any other questions? And is there any other public comment? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any, do we want to take a moment to read this letter that's just been presented to us? Okay, Mr. Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Once again, Robert Pritt. I just wanted to make a couple of comments in closing. First, the, looking at the screen here, you can see that the property is very odd-shaped and it's narrow. Secondly, we heard from the owner of the adjacent property that this property came from the original, both these properties were together. Thirdly, the, the concern was that the house was fairly large. And looking at this, I cannot tell what the size is of the, the next-door neighbor's property, but it looks to me like it's larger yet. So I think that, that this house that we're proposing is in keeping with the neighborhood and is very sensitive to his own, his property also. Fourthly, the easement is actually over my client's property. Not that that makes a whole lot of difference, but it is an easement that's encumbering my client's property, and it in no way impedes the access to the property behind it. And when you make your decisions and consider this, I ask you to consider the fact that this really has no effect, no negative effect on anybody. It has, it's, it's, it comes from, as your planner had indicated, we, we have some, some documents that show that it's a driveway easement, some documents that show it's a roadway easement. I don't think that the engineering company that did this way back 40, 50 years ago, whenever it was, was paying too much attention to the difference between the two. But it will still function as a driveway. There's nowhere else for it to go. And therefore, we ask that you consider granting the variance request. I'll be glad to answer any questions or try to.
Any questions? Having seen none, is there any public rebuttal? Any more comments? Not seeing any? Do I hear a motion?
We have to close public hearings.
Pardon?
Close public hearings.
Close, close the public... Close the public hearing.
Board, if you'd like to make a motion.
Would somebody like to make a motion, please?
I have another question.
I have another question.
I'll, I'll motion for, until we can discuss.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I will, I will move that we accept staff's recommendation of approval of this, this before us today.
Any other discussion?
We have a second.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll make a second and just want to make sure that the conditions from the staff report are included in the resolution as well.
Okay, we have, we have a second to the motion. Roll call?
Frank Lyles?
Wait a minute, hold on a second. Discussion still, okay. Sorry. I'm new at this. Forgive me.
A question for Jackie. Just to clarify, we have a twenty-foot wide easement with a driveway on it.
It's a roadway utility easement. If it was a drainage easement or just an access easement and not a road, they could build up to that easement line.
But you're asking for a five-foot?
Setback from the easement line.
Is this sort of a compromise or explain to me the five feet?
The thing is, when you think of a road, like you think of Bonita Beach Road, you think of a residential street where you have lots of traffic going through, you want structures to be set back a certain distance for health, safety reasons and whatnot. You don't want a car running through someone's house, front door. But in this case, this easement really functions as a driveway to one house. So, that's why staff was comfortable and did feel that they met the hardship criteria because the easement doesn't necessarily function as a road per our land development code. It functions really as a driveway to a house, to one house. So, that's why staff felt comfortable and recommended approval based on that criteria. If it was a road to serve a larger set of houses, staff would definitely feel different. But again, this is one house. So, that's why staff recommended approval.
So, if, if, if it's a, it's twenty feet wide, in, in one situation where it's considered a road, the house, the house has to be back?
Fifteen feet for a corner lot.
Right, which means thirty-five feet from the property line.
If, correct.
Right.
That's correct.
If we get, the other situation, if it's just considered a, a access easement?
They could go up to twenty feet.
They can go up to twenty.
In this case, they're asking for a five-foot?
So, they're asking for, they're a cushion of five, a sort of a compromise of five feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? We have a motion. We have a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Frank Lyles?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
No.
Pete Pastore?
No.
Chairman Brunswick?
Yes.
Mark Nussbaum?
Yes.
Wes Norris?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We have the, can we? Can we hear the next case, please?
The next case is case name REZ14-10412-BOS Oak Creek Preserve. This is a rezoning of three point nine three plus or minus acres from the two family conservation, TFC-2 and commercial C1-A districts to the environmental critical district. We have Jaclyn Gensen here for the staff report.
Oh, Mimi. Okay. Who's presenting this, kid? I'm not doing it. Yeah, you are. Get up here.
They're fighting over us.
Tough question, I mean, a tough.
Do you want to take a break?
Huh? It is.
Oh, we're okay? Okay.
Actually, it's just gonna be a driveway, so I don't know. And the guy's not good.
Good morning again. For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, Community Development. Mr. Lyles, can you get the lights, please?
Jackie, I have to swear, I have to swear you in again per every case. Just the, just the front ones, Frank. It was fine. Yeah. Raise your hand. Do you swear from the testimonial you give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning. For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, Community Development. This is a city-initiated rezoning request to rezone three point nine three acres from TFC-2 and C1A to the environmental critical district, the EC district. This is a location map here before you. This is Bonita Beach Road. This is Matheson and Dean Street. The property is three parcels and it deadends at Matheson. It's owned by Lee County. Future land use map is medium density residential and general commercial. So, the medium density residential does allow residential uses. General commercial allows for commercial uses. Zoning is TFC-2 and C1A. And the current use is that it's a county-owned property that they purchased in two thousand and eight and it currently is maintained and functions as a preserve. Just some background, yeah, it was purchased by the county with their Lee County Conservation 2020 program. And for a while, the city did want to go ahead and have a part and add to the parks program and whatnot. So, in two thousand and eight, there was a resolution approved that the city would restore and maintain this property as a preserve. The rezoning request is something that the county had asked of the city to do, to go ahead and rezone it to a zoning classification that was consistent with a preserve category. You really don't need to. Each zoning district does allow a park group one by right. So, again, the county was requesting that the city go ahead and do this. We do have other 2020 properties in the city that are zoned AG2, but the county did request that we do this, so we are fulfilling that request. There is in your packet an attachment with the draft stewardship plan. I do have Mike Kirby here and John Gucciardo, who is the point person, John Gucciardo, to answer any questions on the county process, on why we have to do the stewardship plan and, and why we are here today. Again, the EC district was requested by Lee County. Originally, the city, we were proposing a community facilities plan development so we could go ahead and condition it, but the county wanted the EC district instead, so that's why we are here today, just doing a simple rezoning. This is the surrounding area. This is just an aerial for you. This is the part that has the commercial designation. This is Oak Creek, which transverses the property. And then this is the TFC-2 residential piece, which surrounds some neighborhood homes. And this here is just zoning map to show you everything. Compatibility, it's a preserve. It's very low impact, very low uses. So, as you can see, it's, it's compatible with the neighborhood. Otherwise, it'd just be vacant property. So, it's very compatible with the residential, residential uses to the northeast and west and the commercial uses to the south. The preserves shouldn't impact any residential uses. However, we did receive one concern and I did provide you a copy of the email in the packet and the clerk does have it, so it will be a part of the record. And if you have questions about that, Mr. Gucciardo can answer those for you when we conclude. But really, the purpose of the EC district is to preserve lands that are worthy of preservation. This property does have some very vital land cover and vegetation cover. Oak Creek transverses it, so it is appropriate to go ahead and rezone this property to the EC district because it is of natural significance. So, again, another criteria for compatibility. And it was a request by the county. And as I said before, there are some neighborhood concerns that we feel we can address after this. And so findings and conclusions, it's consistent with the Bonita Plan. You can have public, semi-public uses in that classification. It's applicable with requirements for rezoning. There's no health, public safety concerns. Compatible. So, if you have any questions, staff would be happy to answer.
Would you give the board a moment to review this?
Of course. Mr. Colick?
Mr. Colick?
Yes. And he's gonna try to be here today. If he can't, he's gonna do an affidavit so he can speak before council, but we think that we had his concerns.
That's in the, the last page of the handout you were giving the gentleman? I have a, a question, Jaclyn. Having read the email from Mr., I guess it's Jacques Colick, who is a neighbor and voicing his concerns, which sound like legitimate concerns as far as people not knowing where the park ends and where his backyard begins. Would it be appropriate, or is it in the city's plan, to put any kind of a barrier, a fence, anything to separate the park area from, from this gentleman's yard?
For that question, I have Mr. Gucciardo here, who would be happy to answer.
Okay.
Good morning.
Would you state your name, sir?
Can you state your name for the record?
John Gucciardo.
And do you swear from the testimonial you give today is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
As Jackie mentioned, this property was purchased with 2020 funds from the county. It's a slightly smaller parcel than they normally would buy. And as part of the preconditions to go ahead and use the funds to buy that property and keep it as a preserve, the city entered into an agreement that indicated we would go ahead and then do the ongoing maintenance and, and actual park plan. And that's reflected in the stewardship plan, stewardship plan. The complaint that we had from the neighbor was really first brought to our attention on Friday. We weren't aware of these kind of issues beforehand, but we take it very seriously. I don't know that we can fence off the property. That was specifically indicated in our agreement with the county that was something that we would not be looking to do because fencing in a preserve area usually is not the appropriate way to, to go. Having said that, we take those complaints and concerns very seriously, whereas matter of fact, our Parks Director and her maintenance people were out there this morning, first thing, to take a look at the situation and get a feel for what our options might be. So, I'm not sure that I can commit to what kind of a corrective action we would take, but I do know that we will address this neighbor's concerns, take them very seriously, whether or not it means posting the property better or in some other way delineating the preserve boundaries from the private property. I'm sure we'll take the appropriate action, but I don't want to commit to saying that a fence would be the, the right way to go. What I do want to stress, though, is that those concerns that are being voiced really go to the functionality of the property rather than the zoning designation. And what you're doing today is changing the zoning designation. So, whether or not that would happen, we would still need to address those, those concerns and we, obviously, we will.
On a, on a standard zoning, on a standard zoning change, you can't add any conditions to the change. It has to just be the change of zoning.
There is currently signage on the property that, that it's a preserve, correct? Okay. And, and, and the homeowner, if he so chose, he could put a fence up around the perimeter of his property?
I, I assume so.
Okay.
And it may be something as simple as, as more enhanced signage.
If, if we take zoning action here today, would that really change the use or the intensity of the property?
No, nor will it change our intent to go out and address this set of problems. We obviously will be doing that.
So, is the property county-owned and we maintain it?
Yes.
Do, do we receive any funding from the county to maintain it?
No.
No.
Any, any, any questions from the, other questions from the board? So, we are, thank you. So, we are only addressing the zoning change and we don't want to be bogged down with the issues at hand.
Right.
Although that they, now that we're aware of them, they become a concern for the board. We have, we have no other questions.
But I just, Jaclyn, to your knowledge, has the city received other complaints or put, from the sheriff's office or about the property?
Not that I'm aware of. However, when I, when we first were bringing this case forward, we were going to do a plan development and we went ahead and advertised. And at that point, I did get some phone calls from residents concerned that it was gonna be a park and that we were gonna be inviting more people to it. But when I sent out this revised notice under the auspice of a rezone, I didn't receive anything until Friday. So, so to my knowledge, this is the first time I've been aware and I did go ahead and send this. Mr. Gucciardo has it, Parks and Rec has it, and Code Enforcement does have this email as well, so everyone's aware. But like Mr. Gucciardo said, they are taking care of this right now.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public input? Not seeing any? I'm gonna take it to the board. Somebody wish to make a motion? So moved. Mr. Pastore? A second?
I'll second.
Mr. Nussbaum? Discussion? Any discussion? Not hearing any. May we have a roll call, please?
Wes Norris?
Yes.
Mark Nussbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Brunswick?
Yes.
Pete Pastore?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Frank Lyles?
Yes.
Motion is approved. At this point, back to my minutes here, I need approval of the minutes, the board minutes for the January, looking for the date, fourteenth?
No, it's December seventeenth here.
Did we not get approval last month for the December seventeenth? I wasn't here.
Yeah, there was approval, so it would just be the January meeting.
Just the January fourteenth minutes. I need a, an approval, a motion for approval.
I'm move, accepted as written, the minutes.
I'll second.
Uh, do we need a roll call on that or just all in favor? Roll call.
Frank Lyles?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Pete Pastore?
Yes.
Chairman Brunswick?
Yes.
Mark Nussbaum?
Yes.
Wes Norris?
Yes.
That concludes our business for today. I thank everybody for their attendance and their input and we'll see you next month.
Need a motion adjourned.